So I think we're ready to start. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock on my computer. And I would ask Councilperson Evelyn Bryant Ward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Thank you Chairman Gann. Will you all join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes on the previous meeting. Are there any comments on the minutes from the previous meeting?
Chairman Gann. Go ahead Evelyn.
Yeah, I have one correction. Section 3-3A where it says the motion was approved unanimously. I didn't get a chance to abstain because a vote wasn't taken. So I would have abstained from that vote.
Thank you for that Councilwoman. I will revise that just to show that. I'm not quite sure how to reflect that. How do you propose that that's reflected in the minutes?
Well, well, we didn't, the motion was moved and properly seconded, but there was no vote taken. It was just assumed that we all agreed unanimously. And I think I'm Chairman Gann and I've had that conversation. So going forward, we should be taking votes on all motions made.
So Danielle, I don't think there's any issue with reflecting the minutes to show that it was the councilperson's intent to abstain. And so the vote would have been, let's see Debbie wasn't here. So it would have been 3, 4, 1 abstention.
And that was going to be my comment. You all have me as present and I wasn't. So can you remove that as well?
Yes, thank you. The auto fill gets me sometimes.
Are there any other comments? So can I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So moved.
That was Debbie. A second.
Second.
John. So I'm going to practice what Evelyn coached me on. So Debbie, are you in favor of the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Councilperson Evelyn?
Yes.
John Mudd?
Aye.
And the same here, aye. So the minutes are approved as amended unanimously. Thank you very much.
If I may just speak to that, there is a feature that where we can show the recorded vote of each member. And so we'll, we'll use that moving forward. Thank you.
So can you explain that to me Danielle? Cause I mean, I would be asking each individual for a vote, but help me logistically understand that process you're describing.
In the minutes build feature, I can select to show the recorded vote. So it shows the ayes, the nays, those that abstained and it also shows who was absent.
Yes, that's a good idea. Okay. I'm with you on that. Thank you.
And Chairman Gann, if I may just say, all you need to say is all in favor and allow us to vote in all polls. You don't have to call each individual person by name.
Okay. So I guess at the last meeting, I made that assumption rather than asking that question?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Steeplechase Phase 2, Section 2, Part 3. Janine Harrington, could you please cover the staff report?
Absolutely. Good evening Planning Commission members. For Steeplechase, this is for Steeplechase Phase 2, Section 2, Part 3, coming before you for a final plat approval request. On behalf of the applicant, we do have Ron Reimer, who's the owner of the property at this point. The subject property is located in the Steeplechase development on the southbound side of Crane Highway or Route 301 at the intersection of Catalpa Drive. The existing zoning is PDST. That's for the planned development Steeplechase as rezoned in 2018. Proposed use is residential. The size of this particular part of the development is 6.5 acres more or less. To the north, you have commercial highway property that's currently vacant. I have my south and east quadrants mixed up here in my staff report. So to the south is actually the residential Steeplechase or Stagecoach development that was rezoned to R5. To the south, to the east, you have Charles County Rural Residential and to the west, you have Charles County Rural Residential. So as stated, this is the application before you is the review and approval of a final plat for the part three of these Phase 2 section of Steeplechase, and that will create 35 lots. Again, I won't go through the entire background. I think that we've gone through this many times, but I do have the background history, starting with the master site development plan approved in 2005, along with the preliminary plat that was most recently updated in 2018 with the final one plat. And let's go to the most recent section, which was the Phase 2, Section 2, Part 2, that we reviewed and approved on April 6th of this year. And we approved it with the following condition, that the final plat for Steeplechase Phase 2, Section 2, Part 3 cannot be submitted until the new pump station has been built and operational, or until the Director of Operations determines that sewer capacity is available. We do have McCrone Engineering that has been working on the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and calculations determining the capacity that's in the Steeplechase pump station at this current time. So we did reach out to them to get some follow-up moving forward. But for this proposal, the applicant is proposing to create lots 285 through 304, 310 through 321, and 336 through 338. They are proposing zero single-family dwellings, 12 duplex units, eight two-story townhomes, and 15 three-story townhomes. Plot also includes 2.2 approximately acres of open space and residue, which will be the future Phase 2, Section 2, Part 4. The staff has reviewed this in compliance with the Towns Code under Chapter 173-24 final plat. And staff has found that the final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat that was approved on June 5th, 2018. Also attached to the agenda for your reference and is in conformance with all applicable sections of the Town Code. Phase 2, Section 2 has now been separated out into four parts due to the sewer capacity being reached on the site. And I refer back to the sewer study that was done on October 22nd of 2019. It is that roughly 65 lots within Phase 2, Section 2 had remaining sewer capacity. On July 9th of 2020, the planning department received updated calculations from McCrone Engineering, and that showed that there was an additional 36 lots to be developed under the existing pump station. They are proposing 35 of those 36 with this final plat. So the explanation that I received, just to make sure that everyone's aware of why we keep adding another final plat when we say we won't, is that under the existing pump station, there is an allowable 270 gallons per minute that we are aware of, and that would be the limiting factor. So the total number of equivalent dwelling units or EDUs, as we call them, at the 250 gallons per day per EDU that the town uses to calculate our sewer capacity, and that can be served within the existing station is 193 EDUs of Phase 1, 168 EDUs of Phase 2, and plus the clubhouse and pool, and the 60,244 square feet of office buildings that were previously done. Phase 1 produces 152 gallons per minute. Phase 2, I said that wrong. Phase 1 produces 152 gallons per minute. Phase 2 produces 118 gallons per minute, and that would be the total of 270 gallons per minute for that pump station. They did also take into consideration a 5% inflow and infiltration, or as we call it INI, as part of those calculations to give a little bit of a buffer on that. So as noted on the Phase 2, Section 2 final plat, the Phase 2, Section 1, previously recorded, had 67 lots. Phase 2, Section 2, Part 1, had 52 lots. And Phase 2, Section 2, Part 2, that we did in April, had 13 lots, which was a total of 132 lots. So for the total available capacity for Section 2, we took the 168, subtracted the 132, and got the 36 lots that were remaining. Due to the fact that there's not enough sewer capacity in the existing pump station, the remaining part of Section 2, Part 4, as shown on Attachment 5, will not be able to be developed until a new pump station has been built and is operational. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the Phase 2, Section 2, Part 3 final plat in accordance with Section 173-24 of the Town Code of the Town of La Plata, with the following condition, that the final plat for Phase 2, Section 2, Part 4 cannot be submitted until the new pump station has been built and is operational, or until the Director of Operations determines that sewer capacity is available. And I have provided a Planning Commission recommended motion as part of the staff report, which I'll try to make more of a regular scene for the Planning Commission and other staff reports that I write. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have of me. And as I stated earlier, Ron Reimer is on the call. Should you have any questions of him?
Thank you for that staff report. Are there any comments or questions from commissioners? Okay, I have a couple. On page 6, your fourth paragraph on the staff report, you make mention of the existing pumping station has 270 gallons per minute pumps. As far as we know, that phrase caught my attention because elsewhere it talked about capacity could take on 36 more units or there's 35 being proposed. So we're right at the limit. But what do we mean by as far as we know?
That was based on the assumptions provided by McCrone Engineering. So after they've done their calculations, they tied in the 5% INI. They determined that the existing pump station had approximately 270 gallons per minute. So that's what I was provided as far as the data was concerned.
Okay. And do you know anything about the plans for the new pumping station?
That I think I'll turn over to Ron, because I haven't been involved in those particular conversations. But I know that our Director of Operations Bobby Stahl has been working with Ron to get that pump station moving forward.
Good evening Commissioners. Thank you for, good evening. How are you this evening?
Great.
Just as always, Janine does a fabulous job. Thank you for the summary. I heard a comment saying, why do we keep on coming back when we say this is not, we're not going to do this again? Just, just from a little historical knowledge, in 2019, when we started to move into Phase 2, Section 2, there were 135 lots, and the town asked me to go out and get a sewer study to confirm what we had left. In that, there was, as Janine has correctly said, there were 67 units. And at the time, the town was working, getting the pump station going, getting it built. As we all know, it's taken longer than it has, should have. So of those initial 67, I only asked for 52 of them. And then back in April, I asked for the next 13, which would have been 65 of the 67 from that original 2019 sewer study. As I mentioned in April, that was just a study without McCrone doing a lot of study in regards to actually going into the pump station. What we've, what we've learned since 2019, the inflow is not as great as the study initially showed. And that's why there's this capacity available. So I hope that answers everyone's questions in regards to that. In regards to the new pump station, we have a, we have a permit in hand, or actually the town has a permit in hand. Bobby had hoped to go to Town Council just to update everyone in June, but it sounds like now it's going to be August when that occurs. I think he is, he has everything ready to put it out to bid. So I think Bobby's hope is that this pump station will start by the end of the year. I'll add just one more caveat, because I think one of the reasons why we have, where it says the next phase cannot be built until the pump station is done, or to, or until the facilities manager determines that there is usage. There are other things that can be done to this current pump station that can increase capacity. There are pumps on it, impellers, that you could put a larger impeller and all of a sudden it creates additional capacity. So it's not like we're at a dead end in regards to this current pump station. We're just trying to get the new one built for everybody, but without trying to replace the stuff that's currently in the current pump station. So again, you, you, you very well could see me by the end of the year, at the beginning of the first quarter, because I don't think Bobby's going to get this pump station up and running before I come in for Part 4 now. And it will probably say, we've increased the pump sizes, therefore it has now additional capacity. I hope, I, I hope I answered your question as well as I could.
You answered your question very well for me. Thank you very much for that. Are there any, any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman John Mudd, quick question, I guess to Mr. Reimer. I'm a little confused at this point. Who is building the pump station? Are you building it, or is the Town of La Plata building the pump station?
The Town of La Plata.
This will be a part of the overall southwest quadrant sewer upgrades that we have taken to the Town Council in previous discussions, which is why the town is building it. It's going to serve all of the properties from Steeplechase South as, you know, for that area. So Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're, you're dedicating the land to the town as part of this?
I am dedicating, I'm dedicating the land and a portion of the cost of the pump station that will so, serve the whole southwest quadrant.
All right. I appreciate that answer. Again, I appreciate engineers. I've worked with engineers my whole career and the very scientifically based determinations that they reach. However, when an engineer says, we're, you know, one gallon away from at capacity, that concerns me. And it just seems like there's always a, a magical way to find additional capacity in what is a very old and antiquated pump station. So again, my only concern is for the residents of that community, and I would hate to see some sort of a situation where an overcapacity pump station creates a problem. So with that said, again, I appreciate the answers. It sounds like the long-term answer is not too far away. And if the conditions related to this plat aren't here too, then I think we're in good shape. So again, thank you for the information.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
I have one. Ron, you know, I'm still concerned about the, the unit totals and percentages. So I was just wondering, I know that, you know, as we get closer and closer to the end, yes.
Deborah, do you see this?
No, I can't.
So this is hot off the press as of 9:00 AM this morning, because I knew this question was going to come. If it didn't, I would be upset. I would be upset that it didn't come. Based on the calculations that we have, and Janine should be seeing this on her desk in the next 60 to 90 days, I'm at 47.4% for a three-story townhome.
Okay.
Woo-hoo. High five on Mr. Reimer.
All right. Now, and, and I guess I'm going to be devil's advocate here too, because I know the duplexes, and the duplexes to me are like two connected townhomes. So I'm just curious, you know, are you still going to fill it in with some single families?
Single families have not been a great viable product in the villages of Steeplechase. That's just the way it's been. I think you're going to see more villas like you live in, or the Augusta product. So more two stories. What I see here right at the moment, I have only 59, 59 of 186 that are three-story townhomes in regards to, but I do have 58 duplexes. So again, the way we've constructed the duplex in the past, it looks like more of a home than it does in regards to a townhouse project, because it's only two. And we have created an architecture that looks substantially different than what you normally will see.
Okay. All right. I'm just, you know, I, I, I'm going to abstain from voting on this one, because it's in my phase, but I just am curious on the overall project. Does that make sense? And then I do have one last question. Your second trail, has it connected?
It has not. Going back to your, your abstaining, not to be a, a particular, but just, I think last commission.
Last, yeah, debated.
You debated. Okay. I'm just trying to get clarification. Just want to make sure.
I wanted to double check with Janine and Danielle to make sure that it wasn't a conflict at all. You know, I personally don't feel like it is, because I think I'm objective. And I've had, the questions I've asked, I've asked all along, even before I lived in the community, as Ron will, as Ron will attest to.
Yeah. Very consistent in your.
Having you heard you say that, then I am a little confused on why you're choosing to abstain.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. I was going to ask if I, if, if the Planning Commission felt that I should abstain. I'm okay with not abstaining, because I, you know, frankly, I've, the questions I keep asking are the same questions I asked even before I was in the development as a whole. So if, if town is okay with me not abstaining, then I won't.
So before we attempt to answer that question, I think asking Councilwoman Evelyn Bryant Ward the same question, because I think she was involved with the same debate the last time.
She wasn't in the same phase as I am.
You're muted.
I'm not quite sure that that matters. It is, if there is the appearance of a conflict. And so I was advised during my training early on, if there is a, an appearance of a conflict, that you would abstain. And that's why I chose to abstain the last time we had this conversation. And I will do so tonight, not changing my mind based upon other conversations. I feel like if there's an appearance of a conflict, that I should abstain, and that's what I'll do in this vote as well.
Okay. So if I abstain, will we have enough voting?
Yes, we will still have.
Okay. Okay, then that's, that's fine. Then I'll honor Evelyn's interpretation. But Ron, back to you. Did you ever answer my question about connection?
I have not answered that question. I met with Carrie Hansen at Maryland Department of Environment back in June, May-June. She has given me the authority to make that connection now. I've been waiting for the warmest of the months and also the growing season. So most likely that will be installed late August, early September, so we can also seed that hill at the same time to get the growth season of grass.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay. So Janine, I like the fact that you're actually putting in a proposed wording for the motion. So I'll go ahead and make the motion. I'll read it to set that. Accurately captured in the minutes. I move to approve the Steeplechase Phase 2, Section 2, Part 3 final plat as presented with the condition that the final plat for Phase 2, Section 2, Part 4 cannot be submitted until the new pump station has been built and operational, or until the Director of Operations determines sewer capacity is available. That's the motion. Could I ask Tracy or John to second that motion?
I second that.
Thank you Tracy. And just confirming, we have two abstentions, Evelyn and Debbie. John, are you continuing to vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So of the three of us, all in favor. Tracy, are you in favor?
I am.
John?
Aye.
Aye also. So the vote is 3 to nothing with two abstentions. And Mr. Reimer, thank you for your, you and your team being here. And I'm sure, like you said, we will see you soon again.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your reading.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Heritage Green Preliminary Plat for Neighborhood K. As in fight. The Director Harrington, staff report, please.
Okay. So for the Heritage Green Preliminary Plat for Parcel K, they are coming before the Planning Commission today for the review and approval of this preliminary plat. The applicant owner is Dr. Horton, and I believe we have Holly Tompkins on. And then the engineer for the project is Rogers Consulting Incorporated, and we have Gary Untterberg here representing them as well. So this subject property, the entire subdivision, as we know, is, is quite large, and it goes from Route 6 all the way up to Rosewick Road, over to Washington Avenue, and then over to Radio Station Road. Approximately, there's some properties in between. Parcel K is located at the southernmost portion of the site and connects directly to Charles Street off of La Plata Parkway that they're going to be providing the first fifth section of, with this development. So the existing zoning is TDX or Traditional Development Mixed Use. For this particular neighborhood, it is residential, single-family dwellings. The size is approximately 85 acres. I won't go through all of the adjacent and land uses. We have quite a few, but it is quite literally almost in the middle of a town there. So for this project request, the applicant has submitted an application in accordance with Section 173-24 of the Town Code for the review and approval of the Heritage Green Neighborhood K development containing 176 single-family dwelling units. As required by the Town Code, the approval of the preliminary plat shall constitute conditional approval of the subdivision, but shall not constitute approval of the final plat. And the approval of the final plat shall be valid for not more than one year unless an extension is granted by the Planning Commission. So to follow up with some background, the Heritage Green development was originally annexed in 1990. The applicant has proposed a phasing schedule as part of their master site development plan. That was approved on April 19th of this year. And so they'll show in Phase 1, they're proposing to install the Parkway system, beginning at Charles Street, which is the Plata Parkway Phase 1, trunk line sewer that will go all the way up the entire length of the property from Charles Street, from the existing Willow Lane Pump Station up to Rosewick Road, and to the eastern property boundary. Neighborhoods A, B, C, K, as what we're reviewing tonight, O, and P will also be developed in that first phase. And then in Phase 2, the remaining neighborhoods as will conclude the development. I've also provided a table that shows the major milestones for the project. Again, I won't go through all of those, but I'll go through the most recent, starting from March 2nd of 2021. We did have the public hearings for the master site development plan, and that was ultimately approved on April 19th. And then on May 7th of this year, we did approve the mask grading permit for the first phase of the project in order for them to proceed forward with getting that site ready for development. So for the current proposed development, as I mentioned, 176 single-family dwellings. It is in accordance with the master site development plan. As they mentioned in that approval, there are no lot coverage, minimum lot areas, lot widths, or setbacks required. However, they are proposing a 20-foot front setback and a 25-foot rear setback with three-foot side setbacks for the single-family dwellings in this neighborhood. And they're showing a density of 3.03 dwelling units per acre. As noted in the code, it states As noted in the code, it states that there must be a minimum density of six point five dwelling units per acre, but that would be for the entire development overall. So that will tie into the final numbers and the three thousand one hundred and seventy units that are approved under the annexation agreement. Going through the Town Code for Approval and Findings, under Chapter one sixty-seven Stormwater Management, we have reviewed the stormwater management in accordance with this section. The development plans submerged gravel wetlands and bioswales, and all water will be retained on the site and will not adversely affect adjoining property owners. I'll also mention that there's quite a significant floodplain and wetlands going up the western side of the property. So that does help assist with keeping everything contained on the site. Under Chapter one seventy-three dash nine Streets, I will say that all the streets have been designed in compliance with this section. We do defer to the Charles County Design Manual for our road sections, so that is what was used in this instance. They will have six secondary local roads and one alley proposed for this section. And it will connect, as I stated before, to Route Six, Charles Street from the south. The road names have been submitted to Charles County addressing in order to proceed, proceed with creating individual addresses. The site will feature six-foot sidewalks, all ADA compliant ramps at the intersections. And then I wanted to just bring up a little bit of background that will tie into the condition for this particular preliminary plat. When we did the master site development plan review process, Charles County Government did submit a letter dated March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. I did attach it just for your reference to the agenda. They did have concerns regarding the traffic analysis that was done for the overall project and including the impacts to the surrounding road network. Since the town does not have an adequate public facilities ordinance in any situation where a county road is being impacted or a state road is being impacted, we generally would defer to the county or the state to review those and confirm compliance with their AD, you know, APF, or, you know, figuring out what kind of mitigation and traffic improvements needed to happen. We've been having a lot of conversations between town staff, Charles County, and the applicant looking to address the concerns on traffic and to, you know, kind of give everyone a reasonable assurance moving forward that everything will be mitigated at the proper time. And so we are proposing a condition to be placed on the preliminary plat moving forward that as part of the preliminary plat review for each of the neighborhoods or each preliminary plat that's submitted, the developer shall have a traffic impact study conducted for review and approval by Charles County. Within this, these are some of the things that we've kind of talked about internally, just to show what, that the traffic study not only needs to be based on the master site development plan and the town's comprehensive plan, but also looking at the Charles County APF for development districts as well as the State Highway Administration, just to make sure that, that we're all on the same page moving forward. So I think at this point, everyone has come to a pretty good reasoning and understanding how we'll proceed forward. We will have several more meetings, you know, on the back end between the county, the town, and the developer to figure out the process and when things need to, to move forward with that. Under Chapter one seventy-three dash eleven Dedication and Reservation of Parkland, the applicant has provided approximately fifty-four point nine, about fifty-five acres shown on the plat of open space parcels A through L, including a nature walking trail. The nature trail starts at the hiker biker trail along La Plata Parkway and wraps around the southern and western boundary of the neighborhood while it will connect to the future neighborhood above J. In accordance with Town Code Section one eighty-one dash thirty-three dot D dot nine, the overall develop is, development is required to provide twenty-five percent as open space, including five percent as public use space, and that applies to the entire development overall. In Neighborhood K, the open space is equivalent to about sixty-five percent of the total land area. Its site also contains floodplains, wetlands, streams, and steep slopes within the Clark's Run Waterway, which will be preserved and protected from the development. As shown on Sheet Eight of the preliminary plat, the development will contain a top lot and a village green in addition to make use of the public use space requirement. Under one seventy-three dash eighteen Street Trees, the street trees have been provided along the right-of-way as designed and required within the town's code. A total of two hundred and ten trees are proposed with twelve different species listed for consideration along the different road sections. The applicant has stated that a minimum of six different species will be used and will need to be approved with a major site plan as part of the engineering and development review portion by staff. We wanted to note that any trees were looking to have native species as much as possible. We just had our Resource Protection Standards Chapter adopted, or, yeah, adopted, and it'll become effective on August eleventh. So that kind of ties into that new chapter and wanting native species within the watershed. And they are also providing a seven-foot wide planting strip to accommodate those street trees and to prevent interference with utilities. For Chapter one seventy-three dash seventy-seven Preliminary Forest Conservation Plan, they have provided the forest end delineation and forest conservation plan in accordance with this section. The site will propose to clear five hundred and seventy-seven point four-one acres of forest overall. So the preliminary plat, or the preliminary forest conservation plan was done for the entire development, and then the final forest conservation plans will be done by each neighborhood or each section that comes forward with a preliminary plat. Overall, they will retain two hundred and fifty-four point eight-five acres in permanent, permanent forest conservation easements. They will also have approximately fourteen point three-four acres of reforestation, of which twelve point seven-four will be replanted on the site, and three point two acres will need to be provided off-site. So that is something that we'll have to look at as part of the final plat, or the, I keep on I say final plat, final forest conservation plans for each of the neighborhoods. And that will be determined later on. Under Chapter one eighty-six Waters and Sewers, water and sewer connections are being provided in compliance with this section. Water and sewer capacity will be analyzed with the submission of engineering plans for each phase of construction. So far, staff has approved the initial sewer trunk line that will go from the Willow Lane Pump Station up to Rosewick Road. So that way they can at least get that portion started up to Neighborhood K. I know at this point, after having discussions with our Director of Operations, that we do have sufficient capacity as far as water and sewer are concerned for the first few phases here. Under the twenty twenty comprehensive plan, I picked out a few, I could have gone through probably the entire comprehensive plan again, but I did that under the master site development plan. So I will point out a few of the more important topics, that the site is in compliance with our land use element as its zone TDX and the future land use maps calls it as a mixed-use property. The development will reflect the principles of walkability and environmental protection to the greatest extent possible. As we mentioned previously, there's trails, sidewalks, parks, you know, restoration of wetlands or preservation of wetlands, garden areas, and, and making sure that they protect the existing ecological, ecological features for the residents that'll be in that development. See, again, we're getting into the environmental protection. There are several sections that went through the environmental protection and how they will be maintaining or preserving those habitats on site. And that plays into our forest conservation plan that really was targeting the stream valleys and floodplain areas to protect those at the greatest extent possible. For the transportation goals and actions, there are going to be several connections throughout the development leading to Charles Street, Rosewick Road, over to Washington Avenue with a crossing at the CSX Railroad. There'll be connection to Pollen Drive through AgroCopia. There's the proposal that we're working out with the Board of Education to connect over to Radio Station Road. So those will be additional options that will need to work out between those property owners as well as a potential connection at Dorchester and a right out on Caroline Drive at this point. So there are many connections to make sure that there are options for the residents within the community. And with that, I will go on to my staff recommendation. Staff recommends approval of the Heritage Green Neighborhood K preliminary plat in accordance with Section one seventy-three dash twenty-four of the Town Code with the following condition. The applicant shall submit a traffic impact study with future preliminary plats for review and approval by Charles County Government. Each traffic impact study shall be developed in accordance with the Charles County APF manual using the development district standards. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you have of me, and we do have the applicants online if you have any questions of them. And we do have Ben Yekley with the county, since he's been a part of these discussions if you should have any questions of the county.
Thank you for that report, any comments or questions from the commissioners?
I have a couple of questions and comments if I could. So I don't know that I understood when you said for Chapter one seventy-three dash eleven, you said neighborhood above J, what neighborhood is that?
So the neighborhood north of K at this point is, if you look at the master site development plan exhibit, you'll see that above Neighborhood K, they're proposing Neighborhood J. And actually, Danielle, the best one to look at is the tracking exhibit twenty twenty-one.
Okay. And so the other, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, yeah, if you could scroll down a little bit, Danielle, and then you'll see the, the approximate layout. So the trail will connect from K and will lead up into J, and it, it goes throughout the entire development.
Okay. Okay. So the second question I have, you mentioned something about Pollen Drive or entry into or on Pollen Drive into AgroCopia. Is that gonna be a high-traffic area?
It should not be, so if you look over to the right, next to Parcel K, you'll see the O there. And that, well, that little neighborhood will connect into AgroCopia. We always look to have at least two means of egress, ingress or egress for a, a development to ensure proper emergency access, you know, making sure that anyone can get in there with an ambulance or if there's some kind of an emergency. So that's where you'll see that there is a connection over from O into AgroCopia, and then there'll be another one north into N of a future date.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman John Mudd, I've got a couple of questions here. A couple of things from a historical perspective, I reviewed the original traffic study that was associated with the master plan, and that was just at my initiation, my first, you know, membership as a Planning Commission member, so I was not privy to that original vote. But I did review the study. I'm in agreement with Charles County's letter. And I say these things not to insult anybody professionally or personally, but honestly, the original traffic impact study from my perspective was seriously flawed and very incomplete. What it did was provide, in my opinion, a series of false positives which seemed to paint a very glowing picture in terms of potential future road impacts. The county letter, if you read it in detail, outlines five specific flaws and incorrect assumptions that were utilized that once corrected, will very much change the complexion of the project and very well may change physical layouts, intersections, alignments, and such. So part of my problem tonight is we're giving consideration to this preliminary plan that really, from my viewpoint, isn't necessarily ready to be considered. As I understand Janine's indication about the meetings that have occurred recently with the developer and the county, those all sound very promising, I think that's the method the town needs to lean on to ensure that this project does not create adverse impacts to the town. And I guess my primary focus for the traffic impact study had to do with the necessary traffic signal warrant analyses that should be done now, not a month from now, not a year from now, but those should be done now so everyone understands the full impact this project will have, in particular on the Route Six Charles Street intersection. I think everybody's fully aware of the rush hour problems in the town of Aplata today. If you work in the county building, which I did for many a year, it took a long time to get out of there and make it to four eighty-eight. Lot of traffic on Route Six. You add the ultimate impact of this project at that intersection, and that's why I think it's so important and stress the necessity that now is the time to determine the maximum level of impact at that intersection, including the road section, the lane configuration, and the signal necessary to support what will become four-way traffic in the future. Rosewick Road is no less important in that intersection, as well as Washington Avenue and the hope that a CSX crossing is realized in the future. I'm in support of a condition that requires the developer to provide a, a new traffic study and would suggest that once that traffic study is complete and reviewed, that if it necessitates revisions, upgrades, or changes to configurations, that certainly those need to be considered. The, the last thing, again, clarification, Janine, is in your body of your staff report, you listed three conditions. One made it sound as if the town would in fact choose the traffic engineer to perform the study, yet the condition of approval makes it sound like it's up to the applicant to provide that, so clarification is needed there. The last section, Item Three, in your staff report, in that section, I'm, I'm directly opposed to. That's a condition that someone wrote that seems to allude that this project is going to be providing multimodal transportation solutions. I don't think that's the case. And it also suggests that it's gonna be a four, five-way cost split between the state and the county and the town, as well as the developer to install these improvements. From my historical perspective, an impact that is created by a development, it's required to be paid for by the impactor. I, I really don't understand how and why town of Aplata or the county or the State Highway Administration needs to penny up on an impact that's directly responsible from the project. There's no shame in that, that's the reality of, of a project of this size. So again, I'm very, very much stressing that any of these financial impacts related to the project are obviously necessary to be borne by the developer.
Yes. So anyway, please, go ahead.
And my apologies, I was revising my staff report kind of at the last minute, and I think I copied too much from another document I was working off of. So no, we are not, the, the cost to provide the upgrades at intersections, et cetera, will be borne by the developer as agreed to. The idea behind our overall discussions, and we, we had a discussion with State Highway Administration this morning. So State Highway Administration did review and approve the initial traffic impact study. They have determined that at this point, the warrants are not in place to install a traffic signal. They are requiring certain upgrades to Route Six itself as far as XL-Dcel lanes and different improvements of those kinds, and the applicant has been working with them directly on that as, as part of the Route Six entrance construction plans. So they did have to get a permit and approve plan set from State Highway Administration on any initial improvements that were required. So that has been approved, they have their permit to begin construction, which they are working towards at this point. So I do apologize for the, the number three in my staff report that should not have been in there.
Okay.
Because that's not.
Not a problem, and I appreciate the State Highway update. Again, State Highway approved a traffic study related to Parcel. Again, State Highway approved a traffic study related to parcel K, essentially. And obviously, yes, there are no signal warrants present and related to that number of single-family homes. My point earlier is that a traffic signal warrant analysis needs to be done now for the entirety of the project. It's called the design year of the project, which means at what year will all of the units and all of the commercial be complete? That's the major impact we need to look at and understand today, and not a piecemeal increment in terms of impact over the years. Because if we don't create the necessary road section today, we're going to be short-served in the future to try to retrofit a larger road section after the fact. So again, not trying to be over strict here, but this is a serious issue and has probably the greatest impact on the town related to this project of all the issues that it will create. So again, I'm simply looking out for the good of the town. I would suggest that the Route 6 entrance plans that were originally filed in 2019, and apparently they're going to proceed with construction, may end up being out of date and insufficient to support what will be, in my opinion, a major intersection. So that's my position. Again, I'm torn between supporting this with conditions of approval and abstaining at this point, because I'm not sure, from my perspective, this section is ready for formal consideration. Again, realizing that this is still a preliminary plan of subdivision, can be modified, can be changed in the future, and obviously, until a final plat is recorded, it's still a preliminary plan. So again, not trying to go hardball here, but again, I want the concerns noted to the commission and to the applicant. I think it's a great project. I think it's going to be a big support for the town for the next 30 years. But at the same time, we need to do it carefully and to the best benefit for the citizens of this town.
Absolutely noted. And I'll say one more thing, and then I'll turn it over to see if Gary or anyone on the RIC Nixon as well, if they have anything to add as well. So based on our conversations recently, they will be looking to do an updated traffic impact study for the overall site. That will also include different assumptions, but based on the school site, with talking to the Board of Education. We're looking more at parcel M. And that will also include a provision for the road connection to Radio Station Road. So that can't be done until the fall, after the school has, you know, schools have gone back into session. So they will have to provide some updated numbers and do an updated traffic impact study, once school has gone back. I think the first day is August 30th, so they would start that at that time, and then they would resubmit that for review and approval. But I will say that State Highway has, they did make a few changes to the Route 6 improvement plans, and again, I think they could probably speak better than I can on that. But State Highway did have them look at everything with today's reviews and provided the necessary improvements to the intersection for right now. We're having close discussions with the State Highway Administration regarding the Board of Education and school buses going in and out of Willow Lane. So they will have to do signal warrant studies for the State Highway Administration, as well as updated traffic impact studies between the town and the county to make sure that they are installing all the necessary improvements. So that is something that we are working on. And at this time, the Route 6 entrance plans and the first phase of the Alpeida Parkway have been approved, not only by the town, but State Highway Administration, leading into this neighborhood. So I do not believe, in my opinion, that the first phase is something to hold up based on any of the future assumptions on traffic impact studies. It's always going to be concerned with traffic, that's something we're going to have to look at and work at with all parties involved. But I think that that has been done, and the State Highway has agreed to that.
All right. Appreciate that, Janine. Again, my point is big picture versus incremental viewpoints. So again, thank you for that clarification.
So I'd like a further clarification, Janine. I heard you say that the traffic study will be done, looking at the ultimate picture, which is driving at John's question. But I had this impression, will the State Highway Administration look at an ultimate build-out traffic study? Or do they want this to be done piecemeal, which, to me, seems to be a very inefficient way to do business?
Janine, this is Nick Driven with Land Hard Traffic. I'm not sure if you're comfortable at this point with me helping to answer some of these questions?
Absolutely, absolutely. You're the expert.
Okay. Hey, good afternoon, Commissioner, or good evening, I guess, at this point, Commissioners. Mr. Mudd, I certainly appreciate your comments and questions, as well as Commissioner, I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name, I apologize. But, so to be very clear, I guess, Commissioner Mudd, if I could ask what date of study you looked at? Because there have been a number of analyses conducted over the last, you know, six to nine months for this project, and one of which was a full comprehensive study, a full comprehensive traffic impact study, that didn't just include neighborhood K, but included more than 2,000 units of development, the full projected build-out for the site, in addition to a substantial amount of commercial and office development, more than 600,000 square feet of each, which, you know, realistically, I'm not sure whether those, you know, that quantity of, you know, retail and office development might ever materialize. But we have what I think is actually a very conservative study for the entire, for the entire development, comprehensively evaluating everything. And that study has identified a number of fairly substantial and significant intersection improvements, including the ones that Janine identified along Maryland 6. We're talking about adding lanes at the connection into the site. You know, we do have, as Janine mentioned, we met with State Highway this morning, and there are signal warrants that are going to be evaluated. We've identified several locations, including along Maryland 6 and along Rosewick Road, where we believe that signals will be warranted. State Highway has stated that they're not today, but they've, you know, essentially reserved the right to request that we conduct those warrants at their behest at any given time. And I think the coordination with the county that Janine is referring to is sort of almost, you know, looking at this, you know, kind of stepping back from the big picture, the whole development, to understand what happens with each parcel, each successive parcel, and each successive neighborhood coming in. And so, you know, we're sort of envisioning that the study will be updated, this big-picture study, there's an update coming this fall that Janine referenced, that will address the comments that you cited from Charles County. And I would add that, you know, we had seven comments from them, I believe you've all seen that letter, that's, those comments are fairly standard comments. We have discussed them with Charles County. We believe we have resolution to address those in our revised version of the study. But we do have full approval of the entire study for the more than 2,000 units from the State Highway Administration, and, you know, which includes concurrence on all the assumptions, all the traffic counts, all the data that goes into that, as well as, again, a number of fairly substantial improvements at several intersections. So, you know, I'm happy to address any, I guess, follow-up questions, but I'm wondering, you know, which study you looked at, because it seems like maybe it was, you know, potentially not the full, the full traffic impact study that we conducted.
Right.
Which I would be happy to provide a copy of to you, or I'm sure Janine could.
I can certainly do that.
Yeah, well, again, I was just coming on board at the time, and I reviewed the traffic study that was made available on the website, attached to the item. In fact, and I also searched other locations to find it. I wouldn't call it a comprehensive study, I thought it was a snapshot. Obviously, if I had been, had the ability to look at a really comprehensive study, maybe my point of view would be different. I just can't imagine approving a master plan for this project based on a snapshot partial traffic study, which is what occurred. I'm pleased to hear that you all are looking at the traffic signal warrants and doing a comprehensive re-review. The only thing I'll say about State Highway, they're a great agency, I've worked with them for 43 years, but they are limited in terms of their perspective and their focus. State Highway is concerned about primarily state highways, which they should be, just as Charles County is concerned with Charles County roadways and highways. But collectively, and as this collection of town and state and local officials, it's necessary that we continuously work together to reach the same goal. And State Highway, like I said, is a group of great, caring, and professional people, in my opinion, but they don't have the same mindset about the impact to the town of Alpeida that the, you know, the people on the planning commission may have. So that's really my honed-in focus, and I just want to make sure that, as a developer, you guys are clear that this is a major impact, and we just need the truth, we need the facts, we need the total big-picture impact. So there's nothing hidden as we collectively proceed considering this project. So again, I appreciate that update, and that makes me feel a lot better.
Yeah, and I think your points are well taken. You know, just to confirm, the full study is a 261-page document, so it is, you know, it's a comprehensive evaluation, and it, and, you know, we, obviously, State Highway, to your, you know, to your point, State Highway is focused on their roads, which is why we've been coordinating with Charles County. We met with them, actually, twice, two separate times today, with their, Ben Yekley, who is their planner, in charge of administering the APF traffic requirements. We talked through their comments, you know, and I think, again, you know, we're not, the developer, Dr. Horton, is aware here that, you know, and we're all aware, that this is a substantial impact. The full study, again, recommends numerous intersection upgrades, addition of turn lanes, you know, along Route 6 and in other locations, signals that need to be evaluated. I believe we have a package of fairly comprehensive improvements to address, to address any deficiencies that will be created by the development. The developer understands that they're responsible for those improvements and has set aside those funds. And so, you know, I think what we sort of discussed, county, state, and town this morning, was, you know, at this point, it's a function of the timing. And as Janine said, a lot of, you know, there's some work on our end with updating the traffic study and making sure all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted with some of these county comments, but I think there's general consensus on the improvements between the county, the town, and the state, and it's just a matter of, you know, kind of phasing those out and making sure that we have the timing of those correct. So I want to assure you that there is a comprehensive analysis that's been completed, and I will make sure that either through myself or Janine, that you have a copy of that entire study for your reference. And would be happy to hear any additional feedback that you have on it as well.
I do appreciate that. Thank you.
And John, one other thing that I'll point out is that as part of the Route 6 improvements, they are also working with State Highway to make off-site improvements to existing intersections. So not only are they looking at the roads directly adjacent to the development, but they're also looking at how this is going to impact the other major intersections in town, including US 301 at Maryland 6, 301 at Maryland 225, 301 at Heritage Green Parkway, and 301 at Rosewick Road. And they have already begun designing and working with State Highway on making those improvements to ensure that we're looking at this from a holistic view, so not just looking at Route 6, or looking at directly at, you know, Rosewick Road, where it's coming out onto that intersection, but also overall, you know, how this is going to affect traffic throughout the town. So I think that they've been very proactive in working on those improvements as well.
Yeah, that's reassuring, and it's obviously a chain reaction, you know, one impact affects you down the line, so that sounds comprehensive and well-done.
John, do you have other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, this is Steve Scott, I'm a land use attorney for the applicant. If I may just emphasize one point with Nick, and Nick, just getting back to whether parcel K can go forward, and I think that question's been asked, John, is there still a question about that? Because I think, under any analysis, that a sufficient amount of traffic study and approval by the state and the county have been done to move this particular section of the project forward.
Yeah, Steve, I'm having less of a problem being in a positive point of view for this plan tonight. Again, recognizing it's a preliminary plan, is subject to future change out of necessity. I'm reassured by the clarifications you and your team has provided tonight. So again, I think we're all heading in the same direction, and I'm glad to see that. While you're online, I just had a quick question in terms of, just a different topic with the project, but what the current status as far as your DRA and the county is at this point?
Well, it's interesting that you ask, because the dealings that we've had with the county regarding traffic are, in fact, directly related to the DRA. There've been a number of meetings with the county staff and also the county attorney's office, and I've been dealing with the county attorney's office rather extensively. There was a redraft of the DRA, another revision of the DRA settlement agreement circulated yesterday, and I think we're in final form. The county staff and the county attorney's office, at least as far as staff and attorneys are concerned, seem to have this one last concern, which was traffic impacts, and they wanted to make sure that this particular condition that the planning director has included with this preliminary plan approval was included in this, in these proceedings, so that they could get the DRA moved forward. Of course, at the same time, I think we've finally got some light at the end of the tunnel with the DRA, and the commissioners are off this month. So per my discussion with the county attorney's office, it looks like the commissioners are going to take up the completion of the DRA in September when they get back.
All right. I appreciate that update.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from commissioners?
I got one for John, too. So John, so after all this discussion, then, would you have revised that motion, or leave it set as it is?
I think it's benign enough as it's written now, as long as it's understood that the body of the text of the report is not the motion relating to the shared cost condition. But I think as the final version is written, I think it's benign enough and direct enough. And again, I take stock based on what's been presented by the applicant and his staff tonight, as far as their assurances that we're not going to have a problem in the future. So with that, yeah, I'm feeling good that way.
Thanks.
I have a comment, and Janine, you had actually almost read this very paragraph earlier, but I have some confusion about the language, if you could set me up. This is on page three of your report, under the paragraph, "Proposed Development." And the paragraph says, "Neighborhood K is showing a density of 3.03 dwelling units per acre, and it is noted that the overall development must provide a minimum density of 6.5 dwelling units per acre." Is minimum the right word there?
Yes, it is. So it's minimum 6.5, maximum 15. So that's the way that the TDX zone is written in the code. So that's where I was just pointing out, that this one is below the 6.5 dwelling units per acre, but they just need to meet the 6.5 as an overall.
Okay. And I think you've really clarified it for me by also identifying what the maximum is, is 15. Okay. I mean, I could have used this as a calculus problem and say, okay, so suppose the maximum was 200. I don't think.
Just keeping you on your toes.
Right? Okay. Other questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay, then I'll do as before. I'll make the motion that Janine has proposed. The motion is to approve the Heritage Green Neighborhood K preliminary plat as presented with the condition that the applicant submits a traffic impact study with future preliminary plats for review and approval by Charles County government. Each traffic impact study shall be developed in accordance with the town's comprehensive plan and the Charles County APF manual using the Development District standards. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
That was Debbie?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
Yes.
All right. We have a motion and a [inaudible]. We have a motion and a second. Are there any abstentions?
I would say that I would abstain. I still, while I appreciate the clarification, I still continue to have concerns with traffic, so I would abstain.
Well, would that support an abstention, or would that rather support a no vote?
A no vote. Not a no vote, but a no, yeah.
A nay vote, right?
Nay.
Okay.
Okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or raise hands, so I can see who it is. Okay?
Aye.
And aye for me. All opposed? Tracey. Okay, so the vote is four to one in favor of the motion to approve this preliminary plat with the conditions stated. Thank you to the Heritage Green team.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and commission members. We appreciate your time and efforts.
And I'm sure we'll be seeing you many more times in the future. Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is, I think it's the Planning Department Report, correct?
Yes, Planning Department Updates.
Planning Department Project Updates, yes.
All right. So for development review coming forward, we're still anticipating the Loews addition. They hit a little bit of a snafu with their stormwater management, so it's taking a little bit longer, I think, than originally projected. We're also going to be looking at the 109 Charles Street for a major site plan for the proposed apartments located on Charles Street, just above the Baldass Office Building. We just had a site meeting out on site with the developers, kind of looking at the game plan and how water and sewer will be connected, so they will be submitting later on this year, I believe. Townhomes at Potomac Square for their major subdivision, that's the 22 townhomes located off of Scroggen, I think it's off of Lodge and Scroggen Street, that area, off of Hawthorne Road, West Hawthorne Road. So they have started the process with their concept stormwater management plan for stand delineation, so they have begun the development review process. La Plata Gardens, which will be located off of Washington Avenue, just north of the Sage Point Senior, Senior, or what is, how do they call it, the assisted living facility, which is right there at the Heritage Green Parkway intersection, they have started their process with their forest delineation and proposal for a concept stormwater management plan. And then Heritage Green Parcel A, which is on the northern side of the property, next to Rosewick Road, and Parcel O, which is directly adjacent to Parcel K, they will be moving forward. They've submitted their concept stormwater management plans through their initial review. And that's honestly, you know, tying back to that condition, why we put the condition on this, it didn't necessarily apply to the approval of Parcel K, but we are going to be seeing several parcels coming forward in the near future, and so that's why we added that condition onto that approval, to note that we are going to work forward on these upcoming neighborhoods. For matters of information, just as an update overall, we did finalize our memorandum of understanding with the Soil Conservation District. They will be performing all of our stormwater management reviews, and so we're outsourcing that at this time, and so far, it's been fantastic. Tim Wells is their engineer, has been great to work with, very experienced, and is doing very good reviews for us. We also are going to be using McCrone Engineering for outside utility reviews of water and sewer, since they already have a vast knowledge of the town's wastewater treatment plants and the capacity that we have going on, they will be performing our water and sewer reviews. You know, we're definitely getting to a point where sewer and water are things that we need to be noting and paying close attention to, which is why we're trying to have them look at all of these reviews as well. EnterGov, just to get, you know, give you guys an update, I'm still trying to get our citizen self-service portal up and running. I refuse to put it out there when it's not working correctly, so I am working with Tyler Technologies to make sure that everything is, running as smooth as possible. It includes working on some updated reports and placards that we can sign electronically and issue electronically, whereas right now, that's not particularly working on the back end. So we are trying to move forward with that, but again, I want to make sure that it's correct before I push this out to the public, so we will be doing more testing phases and tweaking the back end to make sure it's all right. Still working on our permit and development preparation manual. I'm really trying to get a comprehensive document together that kind of starts from the very beginning process, you know, starting with an annexation, going all the way down through to your occupancy permit for a building. This will have appendices to point out our checklists, it'll have standard notes that need to go on plans, it's going to be a completely comprehensive document for the public to utilize. Charles County Government has something similar, their Plan Preparation Manual, and I think that that's a great tool for the public to use when they're trying to come into the town and figure out how they need to do a project or what they need to do to get something moving. We're also still working on FAQs and guides. I've gotten the final okay through our Public Information Office to make some final edits on that, so I can push those out on the town's website, and I'll also release those on Facebook and other platforms to make sure that everyone can get ahold of those. We're working through several code revisions. Chapter 173, our subdivision ordinance, is going to be a part of that. It'll also tie into our streets, roads, and sidewalks for chapter 170, chapter 186, which is our water and sewer chapter, chapter 191, our sign code. And I'm sure, at this point, I think I've already updated everyone, but our chapter 75, building construction, has been adopted for the 2018 Building Code, and chapter 108 has been adopted for the Resource Protection Standards Chapter. Both of those will become effective on August 11th. Still working through our pedestrian upgrades, that'll be the side path, starting from Rosewick Road, going down Radio Station Road, all the way down through town. The Heritage Green development will tie into that in a couple of places, so that's been a big part of the discussions that we've had with the Board of Education in Charles County regarding those improvements. Just some additional town updates for you. We're looking at our forest mitigation banks. The state has passed some legislation where you have to have not only the language in your ordinance, but a mechanism to utilize forest conservation fee and lieu funding to plant or preserve forest mitigation banks. Otherwise, you can't accept the fee and lieu money to, within the town, we'd have to defer it to the state. So we have a meeting coming up to start talking about how we can put this in motion. We did include the language in our Resource Protection Standards Chapter, so that part of it is taken care of, but now it's the logistics of finding land and finding, you know, a place that we can do this within our watershed to create a forest mitigation bank and provide those off-site easements or off-site mitigation for these projects, Heritage Green being one of them. We've also done several website updates at this point, but there's more that needs to happen. I've tried to update our forms and applications page on the main side of the website to make things a little bit easier to find, so I've separated everything out from applications, checklist, anything to do with bonds or cost estimates, and on down. So if you have a moment, go take a look at the forms and applications side of the website and see the improvements that have been made there. ADA parking is something that we're going to be looking at town-wide. I'd received a couple complaints and then realized that the town hall was missing one portion of our ADA signage, so with our code enforcement officer, we're going to be working through businesses in town, and we've already ordered our signs to make sure that all town property is up to the ADA compliance. And that's just something that we need to be more aware of in our day-to-day reviews and day-to-day life, that there are people that need to have, you know, accessibility, and if you don't have the proper signage or the proper setup for that parking, it can make things very difficult for those that need it. So that's something that we're really going to try to focus on and work on moving forward. Just a couple more things, we're not working on anything, we have nothing going on. We're looking, as I mentioned, we're looking at the subdivision ordinance, but that's also going to tie into our school seat allocation policy. So as noted in the past, we're getting to the point where with Heritage Green taking off and a couple of other proposed projects, school seats need to be evaluated at the proper time, so that will tie into any new projects coming forward, that we look at them at the preliminary plat phase. So for steep, for Heritage Green, that is something that will fall under the DRRA at this point, since they're buying this from the county. So as noted on their preliminary plat, you'll see that they have a one-to-one ratio, so it'd be 176 school seats for that first Parcel K. And then anything outside of the DRRA would be provided by the town under our school seat allocation policy using the Charles County Yield Factors. But we're going to see a significant increase in building permits over the next several years, and so it's going to be very important to start noting school seats, keeping track of them, creating pools, having the town council determine how many school seats are available, working with the Board of Education and the county to provide them with the data, so that way they can, you know, look at anything they need to look at with redistricting or school capacity. And then finally, we're looking at our town boundary. I've got some new tools to play with in ArcGIS to try and look at our town boundary and make sure that it's accurate. We, I think we've gotten it pretty close after working with the Charles County Government's GIS department, but we just want to verify, we're going to look back at the, any annexations, meets and bounds requirement, you know, that are in those agreements, and try to verify our town boundary, so I'll be working on that in the near future as well. And that's all I have, if you have any questions with me.
I have two. Back on the page of matters of information, can you tell us what the acronym EnerGov means?
No. That's what it's called. I honestly have no idea, that's, it's just called EnerGov.
Okay. And if I understood correctly, the bullet above that, Contractor for Utility Reviews, the contract is going to McCrone?
Yeah.
I understand they're uniquely qualified to be able to do that because of their knowledge of our entire water and sewer system, but was that a competitively bid contract? I'm just wondering if there's any potential perception of them being too close to all the knowledge.
I believe that that was thoroughly reviewed, that went through our Director of Operations and through our treasury, you know, we had to look at everything, because if it's, depending on the bids, if it's over a certain amount, it has to go to town councils. I believe all of that was addressed when we started looking at this. I was looking at Soil Conservation District, and the Director of Operations was taking care of utility reviews.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Janine's report on the Planning Department Projects?
I have one. I noticed you said that you're going to look at the sign code, and I remember we spent so much time on the sign code. Is there new rules that we have to edit that sign code again?
So when you are actually trying to implement the sign code, I know that there was very good intentions put behind the most recent update that took place in 2016. There is still a lot of gray area, and with that one court case, and I can't recall it off the top of my head, you know, where it says you can't really look at sign content, if you actually read our code, it still judges on sign content.
I remember that case was like going through it, like in the midst of when we were doing the code, so I'm just, I was just curious if something had happened that really made us have to kind of go back and look at it again.
Me trying to enforce the sign code, that's what happened.
Okay.
But I will say that I found the, there's an International Code Council, I believe is what it was called, but they have a template that you can use for sign code, and it's completely content-neutral. I feel that it's, after reading through that, that it's a much better base to go off of. That way, we are only looking at placement and sizes and kind of limiting the scope of, you know, we get into incidental signs, but then an incidental sign is only these four things, it's just, it's not easy to interpret. Another thing is that we are starting to see a lot more signage in parking lots that don't quite fall under traffic control signs, but they don't, aren't quite allowed under our code as far as the drive-up pickup signs, solar beacons that we're getting at Target, the electric gas station pumps that we have, they don't quite fall into a good category, so that's something else that we're trying to address as part of this.
Okay, thanks.
Deja vu, Debbie.
Well, I just remember we did it as a, like, a group and had town council, had planning commission, had businesses, and the, it just was a very long, drawn-out process, so I just want to make sure we don't mess with our businesses again, too.
So what, and that is a very good point. So my ultimate idea, I've already sent the actual draft or template code to our business association.
Perfect.
So that way, they can start reviewing what I'm looking at. Then my goal is to kind of go through and do the initial town staff draft, where I'm incorporating anything for design review board, any of our particular processes, those types of things. And then we plan to have work sessions with the business association to get their input, to see if there's anything in there that they think might be concerning, and that way, we can bring it up and discuss it, you know, with the appropriate boards and commissions and council, once it gets to that point. I certainly don't want to blindside anyone, I'm really trying to make this easier and clearer. You give, our code enforcement officer will come in and be like, hey, Janine, I found this sign, is this allowed? I don't know. I don't know. I really trying to work on that.
Oh, good. Well, it was painful when we worked on it the first time, so I feel for you.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Janine on the Planning Department Project Updates? Hearing none. Evelyn, how about a council update?
So we've really not been working, we've not done a thing in the past couple of months, have nothing to share, just kidding. So we had several ordinances that came before us and a couple of resolutions to approve ordinances around the International Building Code that will be considered in August or adopted in August, hopefully. As always, Janine has done an amazing job of pulling everything together and getting legal review to make sure that everything is aligned for us to pass and approve. We do have a new town attorney, Mr. Jack Gallow, Jr. We thank Mr. Sussman for his time with us and all of the expertise that he loaned to us during his tenure, and Mr. Gallow, we signed an agreement with him the 16th of July, so he is already working with town staff, and hopefully, he'll do an amazing job for us. We are entering into, we passed a resolution to, entered into an agreement to do a class and comp study for the town staff, and we're excited about that, as well as an organizational study, and that was a budgeted, both items were budgeted, and so we're excited to look at, to see how we can improve upon our operations and make sure that our town staff is being compensated, you know, appropriately, and that we have the right mix of town staff in place, and so all of this is exciting, and we're really looking forward to it. Any questions?
Any questions for Evelyn? Okay, is there any other business to be brought before the commission this evening? Hearing none, I want to thank everyone for your participation tonight. It was a very active meeting, everyone participated, and I appreciate that. And with that, I adjourn the meeting, it's 7:28. Thank you, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
You, too.
Thank you, you, too.
Bye, everyone.
You all take care.